All right, well, it's 7:30 or so. Why don't we go ahead and get started if we could? We do have Phil Duncan. Phil, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, you're in Knoxville, Tennessee, I understand.
Correct.
All right, well, thanks for joining us by phone. I don't know if we have a motion to have Phil join--
I move that council approve electronic participation by Councilmember Duncan in tonight's meeting for personal reasons pursuant to the policy on participation in meetings through electronic means as adopted by council in Resolution 2015-26.
Okay, and Mr. Duncan, can you identify with detail your location and the reason for participation by electronic means?
Yes, I'm at 245 Geneva Road, Knoxville, Tennessee, here on Family Business.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Should we do this by roll call vote as opposed to voice vote? Carol, does it matter?
Either.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, extensions. Phil, welcome aboard. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
So anyway, welcome to you all, and thank you all for coming out to November 22, 2017, work session of the Falls Church City Council. Mr. Shields, do you want to go ahead and maybe get started with a little introduction to the topics on the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor Carter. Today's work session is--we have three items, all of them related to the campus project. So we'll start off with a discussion of the comp plan with a request that the council schedule that for referral to the Planning Commission at your next meeting. We do have a good number of Planning Commission members here tonight, so they can hear this discussion and, assuming that it is referred to them, consider it and then have it come back to the City Council for action in January. The second item on the agenda is a budget amendment that is exclusively related to the use of capital reserves to advance the next phase of the planning for the high school campus project. And then lastly, we wanted to bring to the council for your discussion, a discussion we had with Economic Working Group on campus project management and governance structure. So that would be the last thing on the agenda. So to start things off, we'll have Jim Snyder to talk about the proposed amendment to the comp plan.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you know, we've been talking for a long time about the future of the area that the city was received as a part of the water sale and the boundary adjustment with Fairfax County. And so at this time, we're recommending that you take action at your next meeting to pass a resolution beginning the process of changing the land use for the area. The future land use map for the areas that we got from Fairfax County have remained unplanned, so they're basically undesignated on the city's comprehensive plan, the future land use map. So we believe the appropriate first step is to make those changes on the land use map. Zoning can come later. So there's a map that I think has come with your report that shows the patterns for the four areas that came to us from Fairfax County. Numbers one and two are the areas that are part of the school properties. And so in those cases, we're showing that entire area as a special revitalization district for education and economic development. And this is consistent with the boundary adjustment agreement that was part of the inaction of the boundary adjustment with Fairfax County and ratified by the state and by the voters in each--in the city. We're showing 30% of the area for mixed use, the other 70% park, open space, with two school symbols symbolizing the two schools that have been there for some time. But as you all know, these have been in Fairfax County. So any land use actions, zoning actions previous were all in Fairfax County. Then there are two other smaller areas. One is a portion of the parking lot next to the Giant at Haycock and Route 7, Broad Street, and a portion of the city's property yard, which is adjacent to Shreve Road and Gordon Road. So these areas would be changed to business that reflects the adjoining land use patterns. This would be an appropriate designation at this time. They might be changed later, but at present, it would be consistent with their surrounding adjoining properties. Ms. Carly Aubrey has done a lot of work on this, and I would ask her to maybe take you through some of the reasons for the changes that have been made that are spelled out in the staff report. There's a pretty comprehensive look at the comprehensive plan and the history, which is detailed in the report. And so we would see this report with some changes coming back to you next Monday if you believe this is appropriate for referral out to the Planning Commission, begin the process of changing the land use map for the city. We'd go through the Planning Commission, and then we'd come back to the City Council. And so those items are spelled out in more detail in the staff report.
Some of the recent planning history for these sites in the past has been--they are designated as planning opportunity areas, some in the existing comprehensive plan, and then with recent amendments last year with the conjunction with the revitalization district and the urban development area, a resolution that was adopted by council in 2016. So the proposed special revitalization district for education and economic development is included within the proposed planning opportunity area eight, which is specific for the schools-related parcels. And then areas three and four on the map are--and areas one and two, one and two, are all included in the Broad Street--or the--sorry. Yeah, the Broad Street revitalization area. Areas three is in the West End planning opportunity area, and area four is in the Gordon Road Triangle planning opportunity area. So all of these past planning efforts has kind of provided the framework for future planning efforts that we're looking at today, which includes changing these areas to parks and open space for the schools and mixed use for the commercial areas and then business for the other two areas.
One comment I also might make, and, Mr. Mayor, you were present at the meeting, as I think was Mr. Zee and possibly some of the other members of council. The West Falls Church Metro Station is a station that is underutilized in the system. And I believe they were talking at the meeting that we chaired at COG that some $900,000 to a million and a half dollar deficit is run each year by that station. So there is a real need for more development to be around that station, and one of the benefits of this plan is that it will provide more development in the portion owned by the city that will help that station be a more viable part of the larger Womata system.
Thank you very much. You know, we've got a few Planning Commissioners here. It should all be okay if we invited them up to the table? Is that all right? Why don't--do the Planning Commissioners want to come up to the table since we'll be-- maybe we can make some room for you all. So while they're getting set, does anyone on council have any questions or comments? Vice Mayor Connolly, and then Ms. Hardy.
Ms. Aubrey, on the special revitalization district, we have another revitalization district that we designated last year, right? Is that all of Route 7?
It's West Broad Street, basically.
It's West Broad Street. So then, does it hit on the map, edge of this revitalization district?
No, this will be kind of revitalization district within a revitalization area.
Area, yeah. We have three revitalization areas. One is West Broad Street.
Right.
One is Washington Street.
Washington Street.
And the third one is the East End area, and they include the opportunity areas. So that's one of the earlier planning efforts that was done as partly in response to the state's changes in their proffer rules.
Right.
But also to designate in a more simple manner the areas where the city wants to focus development.
Right. But my question--so this is then encompassed in the previous revitalization area?
Correct.
So this is a district within an area?
Yes.
And the language that starts here on line 287, is that new language that was just written for this ordinance?
Correct. That'll be new Chapter 4 text language for that district.
Okay. So I would like to request that, once we're done working through this dinner work session tonight, that gets sent to the school board by the City Council, just because they have a large part in that piece of land, to make sure that the school board understands what the goals are and that we're on board together. And I have one more question. The area that we've designated mixed use, is this the first piece of land that is actually designated mixed use before it's been designated anything else? Everything else has been a business district that became mixed use.
Well, at some point, when the city put its first land use plan in place, there probably was no designation, so you'd have to go back to that time. But this is an undesigned area. We didn't designate it when it came to the city. So that would be--this would be new, yes.
But the only other mixed use is what we've done by special exception.
Well, we have a lot of mixed use elsewhere in the city in the opportunity area. So we get your map of where those things are in the downtown area and then other areas within opportunity areas. So it's not an uncommon designation on the land use plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hardy?
Great, thank you. I had a bunch of different questions. So what were the other options besides mixed use? And what are the pros and cons of those other designations?
I think--I don't know that we really have other options in the city in terms of tools that we have used. In other words, we have certain land use categories on the future land use map. They're shown on our legend. And mixed use has been the category we have used to allow a variety of developments to have a mixture of commercial, hotel, retail, and residential. We have been talking for some time about the ability to zone this area for--in the B zones, which allows a variety of uses, including schools and public buildings, but also allows commercial, only allows residential with a special exception. And so the mixed use pattern would be consistent with one of the B zones for this area when we choose to rezone the property. Presently, it's zoned R1A, single family.
So I imagine one of the questions that may be in the community is that if we zone it mixed use, does it preclude all commercial uses, even though the market reality may be that we're going to get proposals that contain some mixture of residential?
Well, it would not be zoned mixed use. It would be planned for mixed use. And so the zoning would come later. One of the benefits of the city's B zones is that they do not allow residential except by special exception. And so that would give us the ability to use that same approach here in terms of whatever mix of residential, hotel, commercial, retail, office that we might want. So the mixed use category encompasses all of those things, certainly by policy and by whatever agreement the city makes with some future development party. We can dictate, I would think, the proportions and the densities and the mix of uses as a part of that process.
So taking kind of a broader view of what else is surrounding, since we are surrounded by Fairfax County, what are the, I guess, future designations that Fairfax County has in those other two corners? And how does this compare to what's there?
Fairfax has actually went through a down planting in this area, and I think they have some of their areas--they downplanned some of the buyer properties on Shreve Road, and I believe they're in the 25, 29 unit acre residential. We can get the detailed designations for you. Be happy to do that. But it's--they're not planned for higher density. They are--as you may know, for example, the--was it the same--there was a garden center that was rezoned for townhouses since that boundary adjustment was made. It was a down planting.
The reason I ask is I think that while we control our own destiny on this site, and it is our land now, I think it's important to have that context in mind so that whether we get feedback or input later on from our neighbors, I think just knowing how this fits in with the broader context of that whole quadrant is important, so that we don't get concerns later on of like, whoa, this is way out of context from what's surrounding.
Well, it is different from what's nearby, because Fairfax County has not seen this as a higher density development area.
Or similarly, if they see that we make that first move, maybe they'll consider some of the properties near the metro, and they maybe want to upplan what's there, too.
They did go through a replanning at the time of the boundary readjustment. I believe the UVA Virginia Tech site is actually zoned for commercial use, but it's been planned, replanned for residential. So the commercial use is still available because of the site plan that was vested, but it's actually been planned for residential use.
So is it customary for us to get this in front of Fairfax County, just as a, hey, here's what's happening adjacent to your--
We are required by state law to notify Fairfax County and Arlington County of anything that happens within a certain distance of their locality. So in this case, we would be notifying people. We get letters, for example, from Fairfax on comprehensive plan changes, so that's part of the state law requirements. We would be doing that. We have talked with the Fairfax County Planning Office and some of their lead people about our intentions, kept them in the loop on this for some time, and so they are aware of what we're talking about. And they were invited and participated in the stakeholder session that we had last year in this room, where we had Fairfax County, Womata, lots of people to talk about this site and plans the city has for it.
Last question, and then I'll give the floor. We've talked about also putting in a tax overlay district of some kind in this area. Is there anything we need to do with this comp plan change to make that, I guess pave the road for that later on?
I don't think there's anything you need to do specifically. The idea of a special revitalization district for education and economic development does suggest that you could do special things in that area. So if you chose to do that in an area like this, I think the land use, the idea of a special district would support one of those special features that you might choose to put on this site. One of the reasons for calling this out in that manner was trying to be as consistent as possible with Fairfax County, with the agreement we have with the state and with Fairfax County, that this is going to be education and some amount of development. And so this land use pattern is really designed to help portray that accurately, both in form, you know, the physical proportions of the designations and the area. So that's one of the reasons for putting the line around it and calling it out as a special district.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Zee?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, I can see where this is going and applaud this effort that, coming from the comprehensive plan, and I assume that this fits in with the comprehensive plan, you now have land use designations, and then further that you'll eventually get to zoning designations as well. And so my first question is, when do you see, what's the trigger for going the next step with actual zoning?
Well, I think actually getting the land use planning done so that, for example, you need to do a 2232 defining by the Planning Commission that this is an appropriate site for the schools, for example, and this designation. So getting that done, that's part of the state law requirement before you start spending any money on these schools. You have to--you can't do that without going through those formal actions. So while the 2232s were done in Fairfax County, they haven't been done in the city. So those steps are important. They do lay this--they do set the stage for the rezoning. And so I think once the land use is done, then we can look at what's the appropriate zoning designation and the timing for that.
Sure, that's great. I think that's analogous to maybe production of a business plan when you do acquisition. How long do you think 2232 should take in the city?
This should--it should be done, we believe, as a package with the action by the Planning Commission and then endorsed by the City Council. So, you know, we'll have to work out all the advertising dates, but we ought to be able to get this done, you know, I don't know if we get it done by the end of this, by the end, before this year is over, but certainly early 2018. We get started now.
That's heartening. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
The other question I have--
Can I do an add-on, just to follow on to your question?
Sure.
For the meeting next Monday, can you please lay out that schedule? Because I think particularly the periods of public comment, it's really important to have that be very clear.
Yes, we can do that. And also, this is the purview of the Planning Commission. They're the ones who, by law, have to look at this. We've been talking about this in work sessions with them. They've seen some earlier patterns. This is the most recent one that I think we showed as part of some of the small area plan meetings with some refinements. So, but it is particularly a state requirement with them to take action. So we've been doing our best to try to keep them in the loop and inform them and get their feedback on this. We will have a schedule for you, yes.
Okay, and the other question is, and thank you for that, Karen, Ms. Aubrey, is in lines 112 to 122, where you talk about two different studies, the West Falls Church Transportation Study and the Urban Design Guidelines. This language seems to indicate that these have been complete. Are these documents available on the website? Are you going to brief us, or what's the disposition?
They are available. Just to recap, we were able to get three different study, well, actually, four different studies done using grants. The first one was the COG TLC grant that did this transportation piece. Then because of the urban development area grant, Ms. Aubrey looked into and made our application for, we're able to get these urban design guidelines. These were monies from the state, about $65,000, I believe. And then prior to that, we had the ULI COG TAP. So those three things were all done using, you know, grants. And then in addition, there has been a COG energy study that's been done. So we've gotten a lot of good studies done at really minimal cost to the city. They are available, they are on the website, and they're going to inform the eventual small area plan that we are working on. We're going to take the information from that and integrate the best ideas from it into the small area plan. So they gave us additional professional help as we began this process some years ago.
That's fabulous. So I would then expect that when you go forward with the more definition, that you would refer to elements of these studies and inform--
Yes.
--the direction of those documents. Okay, great, thank you.
Phil, did you have anything? Okay.
No, thanks, but yeah, not right now.
All right, why don't we move on to the Planning Commissioners? Do you all have any comments or questions or thoughts for us or for Jim?
I just got one quick question. I mean, we've talked about this a great length here, so there's nothing overly surprising in here. There was one part here on this, what do we call this? The new language for the special revitalization district. Towards the end of page nine of 15, there's a part about says "strategy." And this part I didn't--I had not seen before. It says, well, first of all, it kicks it off by saying, "The goal is to create, to encourage creative proposals and successful economic development," and on and on. And the strategy here says, "Standards should provide for lower building heights and compatible massing adjacent to the schools with higher building heights adjacent to arterials and nearby commercial development." So what I'm assuming we're talking about is having, you know, a step-down approach from Haycock and Route 7. But I have not seen that in any sort of proposal we've talked about or any drawing that we put on the screen. That strategy, while it seems to make sense, is just not something I thought we were going to put in place as standards. I thought we were going to get it pretty wide open to the developer to give us their proposal. So I didn't know what standards we were talking about here.
That's a good point. We did show in some of the conceptual plans, kind of taller buildings potentially around the edges on the commercial side with lower stories. That didn't necessarily mean like real low-rise, but not as tall buildings near, next to the schools as you might have, for example, at Haycock and 7, where you have a lower topography and you would not be impacting the school site. So we can take a look at that. Our intent is to have flexibility, but also we want to make sure that we don't have buildings overwhelming the adjoining school property. So that would be something probably worked out in more detail in the small area plan and the urban design, and then in terms of, it might be guidance to whoever is able to develop the property in the future.
Well, I think guidance is, would be helpful, because you do not want overpowering buildings or towering buildings over the school. But I did think that we wanted to leave it open and give the developer some ability to increase the density in that location. So this is just, this is a newer concept to me, and I'm not sure that I think that lower building heights are necessarily the way to go. I mean, in theory, it is, but not at the loss of potential revenue, because we've prescribed something that has to be so stepped down, so.
I maybe "lower" is the wrong word, because we were not looking at real low buildings, but we weren't looking at real tall buildings. So it's a very good distinction. We appreciate the comment.
Maybe more like a word like "compatible"?
Yes, that's a good thought.
Jim, aren't we planning on at least putting minimal heights? Like, we do have minimal 55-foot, because we don't, you know, we also have certainly, we have nothing, you know, we don't want anything lower than two stories in a lot of places. But don't you, we will be eventually putting in minimal and--
The different B zones do have height limits--
Right, right.
--and that ability to go higher. So I think we do want to have, we don't want one-way buildings.
Yeah, because I agree, this doesn't quite--
Lower may be misleading word.
Yeah, that's not a good word for that.
Other comments, questions, general comments about this and maybe not this document, since we had this opportunity together? Anyone else have any thoughts they'd like to share with the other body? Vice Mayor Connolly?
Back to this special revitalization district language. I just, as I read it, it's really good, and it covers a lot of what I think the goals are that we all have for this site. But one of the things that we have been talking about is making sure that there's synergy between economic development piece and the school piece. I don't see that written in here specifically. And I think we need to call that out, that those two pieces, while they are separate parcels, are working in conjunction with one another. And that can be through transportation, whatever development is close, mix of uses, all that stuff, so that, and that there's adequate access to the school parcel in the back.
Good points. As we've worked on this, too, one other reason for going forward with the plan is that we're going to be asking for funds or competing for funds for CIP improvements along the major roadways and access to the school site and to this site to connect it. Because, as you can see, it's kind of a peninsula surrounded by Fairfax County. And the cost of that work is significant. So having more planning done is really important when you're going out and competing for, with other localities for funds from the state to do transportation, pedestrian improvements, et cetera. We've got lots of overhead wires, very expensive to get rid of on Route 7, but they really need to go, same on Haycock. And so if we can have some of those costs helped paid for through state funding, that should help us be more whole in terms of what we're able to benefit from the redevelopment of our mixed-use site. Also, the schools, I don't think, have any real funds set aside for those kinds of improvements. So we're working hard on getting those things in.
So you're saying that this language here is key to getting outside financing? This is the language--
Well, I'm just saying, we need to have a plan, we need to plan on, we need to plan something. We don't have any official, we have the revitalization areas that were done, that was helpful, but we've not planned them. So getting this done is important, having something on the map that says, here's our general intent. That does not mean we shouldn't improve the language, as you have suggested.
I'm just wondering what the purpose of the language is.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it just to lay a baseline out, to start the whole process? Is it just flowery language?
Well, it's, it's to try to give an idea of what we'd like to achieve there. Certainly, the idea of synergy is important. What I'm trying to say is, I think it's very good that we're moving forward quickly with this.
Yes.
Now, the voters have spoken, so that we have something in place from a policy point of view that backs up the requests we're going to be making for assistance to do some of these important transportation and pedestrian improvements.
And I would also say that, you know, from the Planning Commission's side of it, with this kind of language, it provides us the justification for approving whatever comes forward. We always are pointing to the comprehensive plan as our guide, and with this kind of language, we can say, look, this proposal's consistent with what we see here. So it's just important guidance for us specifically.
So I just want to emphasize that I want to make sure that the school board and the school staff sees this before we approve it, just to make sure that it fits into what they're envisioning their goals are as well.
Absolutely.
Tim, had a comment, either one of you all?
Included in the list of dates that Ms. Oliver asked for, will that also include the dates for the, let's say, the public hearing on the small area plan?
The small area plan is something that I see happening once we've got the land use plan done, the zoning in place, and we have then, and we have a better idea of where we're going. For example, the West Broad Street small area plan was finalized after action was taken on land use and zoning. So I would see that as something that would wrap up the actions and put them all together in one package. We're looking at that probably in the spring of 2018. We'd hope to conclude the zoning and the other actions in advance of that.
Mr. Zee?
Just to amplify and continue on what Ms. Connolly said, I do understand that what you have here characterizes as special revitalization-- you have here characterizes a special revitalization district for education and economic development, it's easy for me to say, is, is the beginning. In addition, you're obviously hearing connection points, so there are others as well. Talk about TIF is a good beginning, but I would say there are probably those among us in our community that have had experience in only TIFs, but, you know, business improvement districts, so that begs the obvious question, why just a TIF, why not a bid, which is closer to a redevelopment area, energy issues as well, open space issues, there are just a lot of things that need to go in here that you're just starting to, to wrap your hands around. So whatever you can do to draw from the previous studies that have already been done, you don't need to reinvent the wheel, but to, again, take advantage of the stakeholders and expertise within our community to make this as perfect as we can, because as the expression goes, we only have one chance to get this right.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Tucker, yeah?
I want to go back to what Vice Mayor Connolly said. I think it's very, very important to bring about the whole concept, the synergy between the schools and economic development. You know, what we've been doing so far has been on parallel roads. Those parallel roads have got to somewhere intersect. And it's really, you know, sitting on, you know, the economic development part committee, and then seeing with schools, lots of times, you know, we're not too sure of what everybody else is talking about. So I think it's very important to have that concept in, to bring it all in together. Just wanted to back that one up.
And that's one of the reasons that we, we wanted to draw this bright line around this area and make it very clear, just by its title, that it is a special area, it's a revitalization area, and education and economic development are, are linked together. This is not about one versus the other, or one and the other, it's about the two together. So your comments are all helpful, and we'll see if we can add more in the text to make that clear. But that was really one of the reasons for drawing this bright line around it and calling it what we're calling it.
Okay. Is there anything else? If not, thank you all for coming to the table with us and the good work you're about to be doing on this. We look forward to hearing back from you all. So why don't we move on to the next part? Mr. Shields of our conversation.
Thanks. Thank you.
To council, the next item is a request for funding.
And what we specifically are asking for is an appropriation of $400,000 of committed capital reserves. They would go for engineering, surveying, legal, marketing, and procurement work associated with the 10 acres of, at the high school campus site that's designated for economic development. The, the source of funds would be the 10 million, approximately $10 million that we have in capital reserves. And we anticipate that this request will get us through the end of the fiscal year and allow us to do the contracting work we need for the next phase of the project. I don't think we'll expend all the funds in the current fiscal year, but we need to appropriate them in order to execute the contracts. On the second page of the staff report are the items that we would request funding, and I want to note right at, at the outset, that at line 44, where we talk about $100,000 for commercial real estate advisory services, that was an initial number for funds that we would expect in the current fiscal year. However, in discussing this with our procurement officer and with finance, the full Phase 2 cost is expected to be approximately $300,000. So in order to execute that contract, that contract for Phase 2, we actually would need that number at line 44 to be $300,000, not 100,000. And that's a typo in the staff report. All the other numbers in this request are unchanged, it's just that note at that paragraph should be 300,000 instead of 100,000. The other items that we would request funding for is approximately $30,000 for a sanitary sewer feasibility study, which is actually underway. And that is, sanitary sewer is, serves the high school site now. It's a gravity system with, with an eight-inch lateral that, that goes basically to the front door of the high school. We need to do a engineering on alternate sanitary sewer alignments, and also where it ultimately is going to flow towards. There's one option to flow towards Fairfax County. The other would be to have a pump station and have it come over to the city. Those are the options that we'll need to consider. All the other utilities are very straightforward, and we're not asking for advanced engineering work on, but the sanitary sewer has its own unique issues that a developer will not be able to figure out on their own. And so we would propose to do that engineering work in advance and then provide that to both the high school builder as well as the private developer. $46,000 is the estimated cost that we have to perform a survey that's in conformance with all of the commercial real estate requirements. We would do a boundary survey for the property. We would survey out all the easements, all dedications, all encumbrances on the property. This would include a title search and all title records for the property, and it would also include the subdivision that ultimately needs to occur. And our project schedule, we're anticipating that we would have a notional boundary where we will have a subdivision for the 10 acres for commercial development and have that marked on, and essentially platted, but not formalized and formally subdivided until after the school design is complete and until after we've selected our top-ranked private developer to finalize exactly where that line best should be between the school uses and the economic development uses. And the $300,000 for the Alvarez and Marcel contract, which I had noted at the outset. And then the last item is an, is an estimated $100,000 for legal services for the whole procurement process for the economic development piece of the contract. The school side of the work that they're doing, we anticipate will be folded into the bond issuance. And so we are not asking for an appropriation at this point for the school-related engineering or design. That is something we typically would bond finance for a CIP project such as this. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Mr. Z?
This $300,000, which you, line 44--
Yes.
--for this current fiscal year, so we have approximately seven months left in this fiscal year. Are we to expect that this will be the operation's tempo going forward for expenditures related to this kind of service? And if so, for how long?
The, we believe that the draw in the current fiscal year would be 140,000, and the draw to get us all the way through contract, the negotiation of the final development agreement is the $300,000 figure. That's really an 18-month figure.
If I could, my recollection was that they had given us a proposal for three different phases that were essentially fixed price for each phase. I don't know why I was thinking this phase was not, was not 300 even, but like 340 or 360. Do I recall that incorrectly?
It's, the estimate was 302,000.
Okay. And so, but this is a fixed price per phase, is it not, for their services?
The first phase was fixed price. The second phase is, is hourly.
Really? So is there any cap on that?
We, we're working through the finalization of the contract for that second phase. It's a contract we're going to need to monitor very carefully. I mean, these, these are high-level professional services, they're expensive services, and we're going to need to mind how we use them and use them very wisely.
I would certainly recommend trying to get some kind of cap because, as we've seen with other consultants, it can get expensive really quick.
Yeah.
And you don't want to have that problem halfway through that they're way over budget. I mean, I think really now's the time to try to negotiate some kind of, you know, as I said, cap or something like that, so we don't just go crazy on costs. Anyway, Mr. Z, I'm sorry I interrupted you, and I guess you have a question if, when he's done that.
No, I think it's along the same lines I was thinking, that there needs to be some, some oversight and some perhaps of notification from them when they, when they have expended a certain amount and to forewarn us what the future allocations could be expected. Just makes sense. Thank you.
Ms. Oliver, and then Ms. Hardy?
So I had two questions. The first one has, is a math question. If I look at line 30, line 36, and line 52, it refers on all those lines to 400,000. The original figures on lines 39, 42, 44, and 49 did not add up to 400,000. We've increased it by two. Are these, is this 400,000 going to 600,000?
No.
Ms. Bauer can answer.
Sure. So the, it's not increasing by 200,000, the 300 in place of the 100,000 for the commercial real estate advisory services was really a typo. So it all adds up to 476,000. Line 39, 42, 44, and 49, it all adds up to 476,000. We have a remaining balance of roughly 85,000 right now from the current appropriation of 900,000 for the project. So that will cover the 76, and then we are requesting for additional 400,000 in appropriation.
Okay. I think it would be helpful if we could sort of show that in a little chart or something so that people understand how the numbers fit together.
Sure. It's put in words in the paragraph above the description, but we'll, we'll take your advice.
A chart. I just like, you know I like charts.
Tables.
Tables. And then, just my second question has to do with the use of capital reserves and the modeling that was done that suggested that we were going to use capital reserves to keep the tax rate low. Does this use of 400,000 impact our ability to mitigate the, the tax rate? I mean, the, using it to cover the--
So using this 400,000 would not affect the change in the, we are proposing a six-cent increase for the total CIP as of the coming year budget, and that would not, are you saying that it would not allow us the 400,000 use?
No, I'm saying if we use the 400,000, in the modeling, we were using capital reserves to shave the peak on the interest.
Right.
So if we spend 400,000 now, that means at some point we don't have it to shave the peak. And I'm asking, is it immediate? Is it longer term? What year?
Yeah, it's, it's definitely longer term. This 400,000 is not going to impact the, the use of the capital reserve at this point. We are using the reserve, but in a staggered approach over the years. We're not using all 10 million in year one or two to, as a start.
When, when we were doing the CIP modeling last July, we anticipated that these costs are very close, these costs would need to be incurred out of capital reserves.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hardy?
So kind of a related question. So besides this budget amendment, do we have a schedule of what the other draws from reserves may be and/or bond issuance? It's just so we have a timeline of when we're spending money and what are the decisions leading up to those points to spend money?
So we did the modeling for the third-year issuance, and we have a sense of, based on those assumptions, how the capital reserve would fluctuate, increase or decrease, and the drawdown that would happen over the years, and the impact of the penny. However, we will, I think as part of December 4th item, the school will be bringing an update on the school cash flow on this. And as part of the bond issuance resolution that will do closer to the issuance of the first bond, we'll, we will bring a total breakdown of what the structure of the bond would be, how we are going to draw down the funding at that time.
Yes, I know we're going to get to this shortly, but on the kind of governance structure, kind of, we have key decision points, so it'd be great to tell the line kind of the money side. So not only drawdown of reserves, but when we do bond issuance and how it links to these decisions, because ultimately each one of these decisions leads to deciding whether we're going to spend money or not, right? So it'd be nice to kind of have that comprehensive look and not do budget amendments and kind of one-off isolations, that we have the full picture of, gosh, we are spending this much now, and this is 5% of the total budget. When we get to this point, we're at 20% of the total budget, you know, et cetera, and so on. So we know kind of the progression of how we're spending money, and we have kind of the long view of how we might spend, hopefully no more than 120% we're issuing. Does that make sense?
Other comments or questions? Vice Mayor Connolly?
This number is less than the amount I thought we were going to see, so I just want to say thank you. You're already holding us tight to the line there, and I appreciate that. Because originally, we had said $700,000, or--
Well, as a reminder, we put in 600,000 as the penny and a half increase--
Right.
--for this year. So this is much less than that.
This is much less. So thank you for that, for really staying close.
Have we got the bill shed?
Yeah, the bad news is, we might come back and ask for more.
Might ask for more, but you're not asking preemptively.
So some additional, some things that aren't in, in here, there has been some discussion about having the city hire its own architectural services during the planning process. We don't have that plugged in. We haven't made that decision yet. There could be some others, but we're going to, the capital reserves are so key to our financing strategy, we really want to husband those dollars very carefully.
Okay, other comments or questions? All right, thank you.
One more I had, sorry, I think you might have mentioned this. So with the schools issuing their first phase of RFP in two weeks, how are they paying for that?
That's going to be done using the bond funding, and we have the resolution for the reimbursement, so current, as a cash flow, it'll be covered out of the reserve for now, but the bond issuance would be before June 30th, so all the funding for their work is coming out of the first tranche of the bond.
Okay. Thanks.
So one way of thinking about that is, that's coming out of the CIP. It's coming out of the 120 million that's in, in the CIP, or the 117.
Okay. Anything else? If not, want to thank you very much. Why don't we move on to the last item on the agenda?
Mayor, I know we invited the planning commissioner, I noticed that the school board chair is in the audience, if we wanted to invite him up there.
Still got a school board elect person, so sure, be delighted to have him come forward if you guys would like to join us at the table.
Can you put this up on the TV screen?
Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Good evening. So council, what, what I'll start with in the discussion about roles and coordination structure for the campus project, I'll just start with just a couple of principles. One is that we recognize this is a very large project, the campus project. It's a very complex project, and it's a community project. And we will need the entire community involved in this project as, as we go forward with the key steps and key decisions that need to be made. If you take this chart, what, what the chart intends to do is just to provide a way of visualizing, a way that we can make sure that the, that the whole project with its two principal components, 10 acres of economic development and a new high school, proceed in a, in a way that is coordinated, is well-organized, has proper lines of governance, has proper lines of accountability, and is, is effective in achieving our goals. I'm going to start at the bottom. If you look at the key decision points, and those were alluded to in the earlier discussion, I think just in terms of first thinking about schedule and then thinking about structure, structure on how we accomplish that schedule is, is, is an easier way to proceed. So we just discussed the comp plan amendments just a moment ago. So the target is to have those completed before we issue on the city side, the economic development side, a request for qualifications for economic development. In May, the city council then would shortlist the respondents to the RFQ for economic development. In May, also, the city council would, would approve the first bond for the high school project, which is currently estimated to be approximately $10 million. Again, we're going to try to make that number as small as possible, but that would be for architecture and engineering for the high school project. In June, the city council would approve the request for proposals for economic development, and that'll be the detailed document asking for, you know, with all the specifications of what we would need to have in proposals and also what we'd like to have in proposals. In the fall, in October, the council will get the recommendations from the evaluation committee, and will authorize staff and, and a team to negotiate with a top-ranked respondent. And then in May 2019, we would have the council approve a master development agreement, and also in May have council approve a special exception-- and also in May have council approve a special exception for a conceptual development plan. Only after that then is the, with the council's approval for the big, the larger bond issuances for the high school. Bond number two for construction, we currently are, are planning for that, could be approximately $60 million. Bond number three then is a year later for the last tranche of the financing for the school. While that is happening, on the school board's side, the school board is the responsible entity for the construction contract for the high school itself. They're currently working on the request for qualifications for the school design and construction. That's really a preliminary step before issuing an RFP. It's really to gather the construction community together and then shortlist who will participate in, in the ultimate RFP for school design and construction, which would be out in, in February. In July of 2018 is when the school board would be scheduled to approve who will design and build the school. And then, in, in July, I'm sorry, I've got, July 2018 is when they approve the contract for who will design and build the school, and then in July of 2019, they would approve the final school design and the guaranteed maximum price and issue a notice to proceed. So in, in terms of the project management schedule, the next 18 months, getting from here to July 2019, is the, the key design phase. That's when the school design is completed and you have a guaranteed maximum price, and that's when the city, the general government's procurement process for the 10 acres of economic development results in a development agreement prior to issuance of the construction bonds. So that's a broad overview of the key decision points over the next 18 months. Now, if you take our traditional structures where the, where the school board manages a school project and the city council manages the financing of that, and then in this project manages the economic development piece of it from a entitlements, zoning, and ultimately a development agreement side of it, we would have proposed a structure where there's a, an economic development project with a designated project manager, and there's a school design and construction project with a school project manager. Both of those will have a, a staff team that will work through the hundreds and thousands of details that need to be worked through for each of those projects. And then working between the two is a proposed campus coordinating committee where the high-level issues, where the two projects interact with each other, where they need to be resolved and worked through in a coordinated and cooperative manner, this committee would oversee that activity. Some examples of areas that, that this committee would work on, the design of the interface areas between the school and the economic development. They would work on project schedules. If one project gets off schedule, that impacts the other project. Those two need to be very closely coordinated. Infrastructure, the design of roads serving both the school and the economic development, that's a shared concern. Sewage, we mentioned earlier, that's a shared concern. All the other utilities that serve the site need to be planned in a coordinated fashion. There's the opportunity for shared parking here, where that should be located, how much, how it will be paid for. That's an issue that, that rises to the, the campus coordinating committee. Financial planning and reporting, that should be done, I would propose, through this, this vehicle as well, as well as to, to, all these issues ultimately get to the governing bodies, but this is a place just to work through these issues. And also this, this committee, because it will meet on a regular basis, is a good venue for getting public information out on the project and regular reporting on the, on the status of the project, which also is a shared and joint concern. This committee would not usurp all of the other cities' boards and commissions that play a vital role in advising you on these, on the key decision points that we listed earlier on. The planning commission has statutory responsibilities. The EDA will have a, a critical role. All of the boards and commissions that are listed here will have their normal responsibility in providing you with their recommendations and their areas of expertise and areas of concern. In addition to the campus coordinating committee, we anticipate that there will be areas of special concern that will need or would benefit from a, a task team of, of probably a less former, formal nature than the campus coordinating committee, but some, a group that could get together to work on issues related to the universities, our neighbors, or to work on outreach with WAMADA and their planning process, or to help us resolve issues with VDOT as, as we're getting our permits for access and egress to the site, for coordination with Fairfax County. That's just a couple of examples where we will probably need to put special teams together to, to work through those issues, and will need, council members will need key citizens who have expertise in these areas or contacts in these areas that we could use to advance the project in, in important ways. So that's an overview of, of a proposal of how to structure this in a way that will make sure that one project doesn't get sideways with another project, and that there's a way that the hundreds of issues that will come up as we're planning these two projects can get resolved in a, ideally with good communication and with, with a good process. I think the goal of this, however the council decides to do this in conjunction with the school board, at all these decision points, the goal is to avoid surprises so that the council is asked to take an action on something that might not be the way that you envisioned it or the council collectively envisioned it at the outset. And this project, as all projects do, will take twists and turns, and so we'll need to work through all the important issues in a coordinated way. One last note on it, then I'll stop and, and we'll have a discussion about this. The intent of the coordinating committee is not to spend a lot of its time on things that are really clearly in, in one project side or the other. For instance, streetscape standards for the commercial development probably wouldn't be an area of focus or concern for the coordinating committee. Similarly, classroom size or furnitures and fixtures for the school probably wouldn't be an area of concern for the coordinating committee. Really, it's those areas where the, the two projects really inform each other and interact with each other.
Okay. A lot there. Why don't we open up to questions and comments? People have some. Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I certainly appreciate this, this attempt to, to put together a, a structure that I, I think would serve admirably for things that can be solved by discussion or by the provision of more information. My, I have two areas of, of concern. The first one is bandwidth. This is, project represents 20% of the, of the value of the city. It's, you know, arguably a $1 billion project. That's a lot of money. So besides the scale of that, I, I just don't know where we're going to find the bandwidth from, say, say you, Wyatt. I mean, if you're telling me you're not busy enough, we could certainly make life even more interesting for you. And for us, many of us have day jobs. The few of us that don't cherish our ability to do what we want during the day, not mentioning names, but, so that is, is a big concern of mine. The other one is that if you have, is one of momentum. Without a project director, without a project executive, without a, an executive director or president of a business improvement district, I don't know how we're going to get to an interjurisdictional discussion with, with Fairfax County on what would be the right approach to redevelop the WAMADA site. Is it a joint venture? Do we act as their agent? I mean, these are things that haven't even been brought up in public, but I'm just throwing them out because it, these are things occurring to me right now, and, and who's going to chase down the role of, of UVA? What is their cooperative agreement? And, and all these things that one comes down to trying to define how we do this development going forward, how we do the economic development offset, how we make this the best possible project? I mean, it probably sounds like I'm making life more interesting for you even as I'm talking already, and just seems to be a really big basket of things. I think that most problems can be probably resolved by talking about them. You'd need data points and you can get that done, but the few problems that can be resolved just by talking about it, that requires deliberation by, by someone or some, a small group to make that happen. I mean, for tonight, at the end of this discussion, I'm going to bring up the, the green building, net zero energy aspect of this, which is, you know, hanging fire right now as far as many members of the community are concerned. For example, there's the, the incoming PTA chairperson for the elementary school who is going to represent that group that would be the first full benefits of George Mason High School. And I know that they're very interested in getting to a net zero energy building. We also know that we're not going to build another high school for, pick a number, 50, 70 years? Do we let this opportunity just slip through our hands? So without getting too heavily into this, a discussion about green building, I'm proposing that as a proxy for something that, is that something that we can resolve within the confines of this group? Or is it something that requires more deliberation? I don't know the answer to that question, but I would welcome a discussion on how we solve those difficult problems that we don't even know are ahead of us yet, that perhaps a group like this, which I think performs more like a oversight committee, a board of directors, if you will, can handle those other kind of issues, but to be able to get traction in certain areas, that bothers me. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Vice Mayor Connolly?
Hi, Sheriff. Mr. Z's concern about bandwidth and the amount of work that's required. Kim Callahan just walked past as we were talking, and she's working hard on two smaller projects in the city, and we have a staff person to do that, and I, I think we need to have someone. We need to have someone who's in charge of it on the city side. There has to be a project manager to, to shepherd this whole thing, and I see we have it to be assigned there, so I look forward to figuring out who that person is, but I think it's going to be a full-time, plump job for a person, not just an add-on for somebody else. And then, would the economic development working group sunset, or would they continue meeting as well? As we go through this.
One of the bandwidth issues is, is not to have too many groups.
Right. Right.
So the idea is that that group would sunset, and this coordinating committee would not really take its place. It has a different function. Some of these issues relating to economic development, though, some, there are some specific things that probably do need one of these smaller task teams that we would stand up on an as-needed basis.
So an economic development group might be a task team?
That's right.
That working group. And then, further down here on the boards and commissions piece, last time we talked about this, I asked that you add the Arts and Humanities Council, but they got added as a community organization, not as a boarding commission.
Okay.
So they need to be moved up so that they are a boarding commission.
Ms. Hardy?
So I like this for the most part. I think that, and I won't speak for the school board members sitting here, but I think we can't treat this project like a traditional school construction project. There's too much linkages between the two, so I think it's necessary to kind of create a different function. I think regardless of, you know, who we staff on this kind of coordinating committee, I think using the green schools example, I think if this committee or group were in place, those are the types of things that I could see being discussed there to kind of get ahead of it before we get to the point where we have concerns about an RFP being issued that doesn't have, you know, green schools being there a must-have. Like that would, I could see that being discussed when this group convenes, to actually have that discussion before it actually gets further along. So I actually see that this could be useful in avoiding issues like that before it kind of gets to the community where people throw up red flags and think, gosh, this doesn't feel like the right set of requirements early on. I echo the concern around bandwidth, and I think besides having a PM on each of those separate work streams, I think what I shared with Mr. Shields earlier is I don't think we should be afraid to actually have kind of a project executive overseeing the entire thing, because that in itself is a job too. And I think, again, given the importance of this project for the future of the city, we shouldn't be afraid to invest in someone like that, whether that's an outside person we don't yet have or clearing their plate from internal staff. But I don't think that you can expect that this whole thing runs without one person being accountable, especially the communication aspect of it too. I think you can't expect these two work streams to communicate separately. It's got to be a joint message that makes sense on how we are approaching this project over time.
Yes, Ms. Oliver?
So I just have a couple logistical comments based on joint committees that I've observed over the last three years and 10 months. And one is I think that the smaller the group is, the more effective it will be, and I actually challenge the decision to put two council and two school board members on it. I think that what you need is one person who is fully committed, and in order to do that, you have to free up the bandwidth by not giving them a lot of other load during this time, so they would not be liaison, and other council members might have to pick up additional boards and commissions to be liaison to and, and things like that. I think that if you've only got one council member and one school board member on there, and that's sort of full-time what they're responsible for, a key thing that they need to do is be communicating constantly back to their groups. I mean, communication has to be the most critical thing that they're doing, and I think that in order to make sure that they have the bandwidth, my personal recommendation would be that neither city council nor school board leadership be that single person appointed, because I feel like those leaders need to be managing the group and overseeing the separate streams that are going on. I'm also concerned, because I've seen this in the past, that if you've only got one or two people on a group and they are perceived as having more authority than the others, which leadership might, that their voices might overspeak the rest of the committee. So I, I think that going forward, you need to be very, very careful about those logistical details, and I know it's, it's the, it's the custom of the school board to present, to, to appoint their chair or vice chair to joint committees, but I think that you should, I guess I'm asking you, to take back, you know, to that group, that in this case, it may not be appropriate. You need, we need our leadership to be focused on the separate streams, and this is more of a communication function. And then the final thing I just want to say is I want to echo what other people have said about the need for a third party, if you will, somebody to lead the joint project that's neither a part of one team nor the other, and I think that if we had such a person, that that person should be the chair of this committee, because co-chairs have their own challenges, and I think that that, if you have somebody that's responsible for things overall and does not report to one side or the other, I think that's more likely to happen. And that's just my words of wisdom from three years and 10 months.
I've got a couple of comments, but I'm happy to defer to, so, I mean, A, as you've heard, I think it's critical we work together in this process, I mean, way more than we've ever done on any endeavor, I think, in probably the, in the city's history. I do have some specific questions or comments about the schedule you laid out, Wyatt. One, it looks like we approved the top-ranked respondent in October, and it looks like in May, you're talking approving the SE, essentially getting all the land use approvals, which is actually a pretty short fuse when you figure that you're not going to have all your materials prepared when you get, when you approve your top-ranked respondent. In other words, they have to go prepare an application, which actually could take a few months, and will likely take a few months to put all the buildings together and, you know, do the engineering and architecture you need to do, to actually even submit an application. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. And I guess the timing as well, like it shows contemporaneously the approval of the master development agreement and the approval entitlements at the same time. Could you explain how that might work? In other words, you, when do you sign the agreement? After the SE is approved? Do you, how, what did you envision?
Them being linked to each other. We know what the expectations are for the level of detail. But in some respects, I think we need to think about it differently. Like, this could be an SE that is, that has built into it perhaps more flexibility than your normal SE. And the reason for that is, and I think this is really a key point that we don't have to resolve tonight, but before we issue the RFP in May, we will need to resolve, is what does that, to fully answer your question that you just asked me. And the reason it's so important is that if, if there are really important things the developer needs to come back for another political or legislative approval on, then that has a big impact in terms of what that agreement results, in terms of any kind of a down payment. And so I think that's something that ultimately we need to study a little bit more and resolve. But what this, sort of the basic idea is that there would be a development agreement with an SE that has a conceptual development plan and possibly some brackets with some flexibility in terms of what that development program is, in terms of uses, and in terms of heights, and that sort of thing.
So you're talking about potentially some kind of conceptual approval, not necessarily detailed as you might see. In other words, we talked about this Pentagon City, like a PDSP, where you might allocate certain amount of density or units or square footage on this 10-acre site and approve it conceptually, but the developer may come back in pieces and seek a specific detailed special exception per each in a phase of that. Maybe it's four phases that would comprise the 10 acres.
I think we still need to do a little bit more work on that.
Jim's right behind you, nodding his head. That's why I was following.
I think so. I'll defer to Jim on that. But I do think the key issue is going to be, will those subsequent approvals be things that will need a legislative approval, or will they be more ministerial in their character? In other words, could a future council essentially undo the deal that struck in May 2019? I think that's the issue.
So, I mean, I guess we've discussed this, and, for example, in Arlington, you would allocate the density, and then you would go ahead and kind of shape it in its form. I mean, I think that's, in some ways, a good way to go about this, because planning out 10 acres of land in detail in eight months or nine months is going to be very hard. I mean, a developer will take months to put together a proposal, a detailed proposal and an application. At least, that's my opinion. So maybe doing it that way is not a bad idea. In other words, having a conceptual approval for the 10 acres, then coming back in pieces and seeking detailed approvals for each mini-phase or each portion of it. I have another couple of questions, if you indulge me. One on the school board side, it says June, or July 2018, approval, final contract, and GMP, and then it's 2019 until it says construction notice to proceed. I guess my concern is, how long are they holding their price for? Are you suggesting they would hold the price for a year? In other words, you'd get a GMP number, but they would wait a year to begin construction?
No, I apologize. So July of 2018, that's the approval for, to proceed with the architecture and engineering piece of the contract. The GMP is then at the end of that design process, so that GMP is in July 2019.
Okay. So that, that was a little confusing for me. I think it'd be good also to know when we're going to have public input, or when public input is proposed on this chart, so that, and we've got to make sure that we push this out to the, to our citizens, our community, to get their input, and give them plenty of opportunities to participate in this process and offer their input. And so I think it'd be good if we can upfront, let people know when they might have a chance to participate and offer their thoughts. And so, anyway, that's a thought as well. Let me think of what else I've got here. That's probably, why don't we turn it over to our school board friends, and we can maybe have a bit of a dialogue tonight? Mr. Webb, did you have anything you wanted to offer or to say?
Thank you very much. In general, I think I like this concept, because this is the type of project that we are going to have to work together, coordinating it between the two bodies. I will say with the, on the school design and the project management side of it, that, you know, generally, as of right now, we, we have that in place, but it will be re-bid out again. So we may be, have someone new within that role for us, but it's in the process of getting re-bid out. We are also kind of in response to Mr. Z's concerns about the green building. We are in the process of reworking the RFQ to include, within the 108 million lead gold, net zero-ready, and geothermal are going to be included into the, the reworked project where, that we'll be bidding out, so that it can become a more public project and have a little bit more input from the community, where the initial thought was looking at it from a little different perspective of, of, in the closed session portion of it, being able to, strategy negotiating a little bit differently, but hearing feedback. And with Dr. Noonan, I think, having some conversations with folks while he was down in Williamsburg at the school board conference last week, I think he's talked with some folks, and being able to be a little bit more public and just put those items into what we're reaching out for in there now, and let architects and designers kind of come back to us with the different bids and things for, for that. But I do, I actually agree with Karen. I think on our side, it has generally been the board chair and vice chair on most of the major decision-making committees. And I will tell you, that's sometimes challenging for me, with having the day job, to always be the person to, to be able to do that. And I do hope to, this year, have that conversation with my colleagues on the board to potentially give opportunities to other board members to, to be able to play a role in those, those different, particularly potentially this committee, and then just let them know that that's some, their important part of it is to communicate back to everyone what's going on. So that, I think that is a good suggestion that I had been thinking about and have with, spoken with Dr. Noonan a little bit about, and some of the, my colleagues on the board, of potentially how, as this big project moves forward, to make sure that there's potentially that designated person who has potentially the flexibility of, when some of these meetings may be happening, to kind of, to address some of those things. I agree with Dave, that kind of looking at this plan, making sure that we build in so that the public can know when the points in the project for them to have their input and comments on, which we are already getting, but making sure that they have the opportunity to, to weigh in as we move forward with the project, too. Again, it's a pretty big commitment that not only we have, but they kind of bought into as well, and making sure that they have a voice at the right points of this project that they are heard as well.
So I'm just going to add a couple of quick questions. One, I suppose, is in the area of sort of examples of project coordination that are listed here. One of the ones I'm surprised not to see would actually be regular status updates, not financial reporting, but just sort of project status updates. Wyatt, was that something that is incorporated under Schedule of Work through the design phase?
Yes.
Okay. And overall, I think the, the structure seems reasonable to me from projects that I've had on similar, similar sorts of projects. The one thing I would agree with strongly is the idea that a single point of contact at the top is usually an easier way of making things go smoothly, so.
Okay.
Yeah, of course.
And I guess with Councilman Hardy, when you're talking of, I guess, the outside person, are you talking about bringing someone in to, from the outside, to kind of coordinate between the two bodies, or just within, just over the campus coordinating committee? Or, I guess I'm trying to understand what you're...
So I think each individual work stream, so the economic development work stream would have someone kind of leading that, as would school design. I presume that's kind of the role that Arcadis currently plays?
Currently, yes.
So they do that as it is, because that's enough for clearly more than one person's job. But I think having kind of a project executive, or whatever we want to call them, what Greg just said, is having someone on point for the coordination and the overall project. So who do we go to, to work on these areas that might overlap between them? Because this committee might actually, you know, roll, be the sleeve-rolling kind of body, right? They actually do the data, do the work, but I think there needs to be kind of someone in charge of that group that may not be a person that comes from either one of these work streams, kind of the neutral third party, I think, as someone else said.
Okay. Thanks.
The other aspect of that is that it's, it's sort of often the person who wakes up in the morning thinks about it, goes to bed thinking about it, and that is really what they're focusing 100% of their, sort of their mental energy space on, is making sure that all of the coordination that does need to happen is happening smoothly, that questions are being answered, that communication pipelines are open.
In traditional kind of project management, having like a RACI chart to know who's actually responsible and accountable, because I imagine this group will be consulting a lot of those decisions, but at the end of the day, there's someone has to make the call on something, recommend it back to the elected bodies, and I think it's important to have a point person. While we've got our school board friends here, I did want to just quickly say thank you for kind of the quick, I guess, change in course with the RFP and kind of putting, hearing the community's feedback on wanting to make sure those green elements are must-haves and not nice-to-haves. I don't know whether everyone has heard, or at least I think I caught the number, about 108. Is that the all-in new price that we were asking for people to bid on, or is that pre-FFNE?
That's pre-FFNE, but I think that was, has always been the initial construction price that was going to be out there, the $108 million.
Okay. So it's not a new 120?
No.
You got our hopes up.
So I would, did you have some, Mr. Z, you're welcome to go next here.
We're ready, I'm prepared to. I'd some input into it.
Let me just hit a couple of things that Wyatt mentioned, but I think are really important, even at the RFP, or the RFQ phase, some of the things he alluded to. I mean, this project, to me, is entirely different than pretty much any other school we've done, a lot of ways, because we have 10 acres, really whole cloth new. We have a metro station right next door. We have two neighbors, UVA, Virginia Tech, we've got, you know, VDOT. There's so many things that, if we, we can't leave any money on the table, we can't leave anything on the table, you know? We really got to make sure we, we hit with all cylinders. But even things like considering transportation, you know, we're going to create a new road, I presume, into the school. And that road, really, we need to be thinking a lot about how that's going to work, because you've got kids on one side, which you're very sensitive to, but on the other side, you want to move people effectively into this 10 acres so that people want to be there. You know, if it's impossible to get across the road, for some reason, the other, the road is too constricted, people won't want to come there, and so we'll leave money on the table because it's unsuccessful. So even things like that, I think we need to be thinking about for the RFP, and, you know, when it comes our way, I'm going to make some comments like that, to just maybe the person, you know, we put out in the RFQ, I mean, is someone who has some experience with transportation or metro-adjacent parcels, and, you know, things like that that might not be readily apparent, that I think probably are important for you all to at least consider in your contemplation of the requirements or recommendations for the RFQ. So I'm looking forward to seeing and certainly working with you all more on that. But, Mr. Z, you had some comments as relates to sustainability?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And, and so this is a test of how this, this works without having a group being formally set up, and no, nobody's name to this, but the school board is here, and so obviously it's council, interesting people, interested people in the audience as well. And what we, I have in front of me, and I'd like to read this into the record with everyone's indulgence, is a short letter from the Environmental Sustainability Council. The subject is Request for Proposals, Qualifications, RFQ for George Mason High School. The ESC strongly recommends that the RFP qualifications for the new George Mason High School include the following requirements. Deliver a balanced design that achieves zero-energy status as defined by the U.S. Department of Energy. Two, integrate learning, design, sustainability, and environmental stewardship so it supports and enhances student learning and student success. Three, deliver a sustainable landscaping requirement that provides students with access to nature, meets the city's residential tree-cappy requirements, and captures stormwater. The ESC has met quite a few times on this, and what they say at this point is that the initial RFQ is an incredibly important step that will affect the city's ability to obtain the high school that it wants. To properly evaluate a bidder's ability to deliver all these requirements, the ESC recommends that the RFQ request evidence of experience. Having built zero-energy or lead gold or platinum schools, points of differentiation would include energy performance data, as well as letters of recommendation that demonstrate how sustainability features have enhanced the school's curriculum and improve student The ESC also recommends that the school board includes sustainability expertise on its advisory panel for proposal evaluations. This input would help inform the city's decision-makers on trade-offs, opportunities, and long-term cost implications that each offer would provide to the City Falls Church. While the focus is on near-term issuance of the RFQ, these recommendations apply as well to the requests for detailed proposals to be issued in February 2018. Lastly, the ESC recommends that the school board and city council invest in the staff capabilities necessary to oversee a project of this magnitude for the city, and to coordinate with development of the adjacent commercial site. That capability should include lead AP certification and experience overseeing zero-energy or lead gold or platinum projects. Environmental sustainability is one of the core values of the City Falls Church, as we reaffirmed in July, when the mayor signed the "We Are Still" letter. The new George Mason High School is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the City Falls Church to back up our commitments with a huge step forward. Having said that, I was uncertain about whether I should bring some examples of stuff that I'd worked on two decades ago for the Department of Energy, design guidelines for temper and humid climates, energy design guidelines for high-performance schools. My name's here as program manager, energy smart guide to campus, cost savings, lessons plans, board lesson plans, high-performance schools, stuff. So, two decades ago. I don't want to do this for the rest of my life. You can't call this net zero-ready, potentially, almost there. You need to put that aspirational element of this. Let the market tell you whether it can be done or not. Don't limit the market. Don't do that to yourselves. Don't do that to your children. Don't do that to the citizens of the city. We have to get this right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anything else anyone would like to say? If not, thank you all for coming out. We appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you very closely, as I know we will be doing in the future. So, thank you much.
Actually, one last question. So what, where do we go from here with this, Wyatt? Do we have to officially charter this group in a meeting? What's the next step timeline? Seems like if we all have agreement, each body kind of moves ahead with it, but it seems like sooner than later is good?
Well, in your, in your deck is a draft charter. It needs a little bit of work. Tonight was an input session.
Thank you. Tonight was an input session on this, on this structure, and, so if you could send me comments on this, I think what we would do is, is work it through and bring it to council for action on December 11th. We, we could do it sooner, like on the 27th, but I think if we want to make this a good coordinated process, make sure everybody's on board with the, how this thing's going to function, December 11th would be a good date.
Yeah, I think so as well. Give the school board an opportunity to participate and comment on it as well. Okay. Well, again, thank you all. Time to roll up our sleeves and get to work, so, thank you. All right. Wyatt, what do we have? Other business? Is there any other business that folks want us to get to? Anything else? How about schedule? Any comments on scheduling? Mr. Duncan, do you have anything before we move on?
No, thanks.
All right. Anything else, anyone, or should we move to adjourn? Excuse me?
Schedule.
Yeah, we did. I mentioned schedule. Anyone have any, I didn't hear any comments on schedule.
I just had a question about whether the GMHS Budget Amendment Ordinance second reading had to be on December 11th, or whether, I mean, is that, does it need to happen in December?
I'm sorry, does, Rich?
The Budget Amendment Ordinance.
Yeah, I think we have scheduled that first reading on the 27th, and second reading on the 11th.
And I just asked if it had to be on the 11th.
I don't think it has to be. I think that's the desire, though.
Anything else on scheduling?
Mr. Mayor, are you going to have a mayor's meeting on Wednesday morning?
I don't know. Why don't we talk about schedules? We certainly, if people are bugging out of town, which I imagine some people are, maybe it isn't the best day to have one. Why don't we pass, then, if people, unless there's an urge to have one on Wednesday?
Okay. Wyatt, did I see something about another meeting on the November 30th, Thursday, when we were going to have the EDC, or was that a meeting before the EDC slot?
There's a Budget and Finance Committee on December 1st, and there, Lauren Bruce had sent out a note to the Economic Working Group about moving to Thursday since Budget and Finance's meeting on Friday. And so we...
Okay, that wouldn't impinge on our...
had sent out a note to the Economic Working Group, um, about moving to Thursday since Budget and Finance is, uh, meeting on Friday. And so we-
Okay, that, that wouldn't impinge on our EDC meeting, because it starts at 9:00, is that right?
That's correct, and they've always been very good at ending before 9:00.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else on schedule? Do we have anything else anybody wants to talk about before we adjourn?
Next Monday is the lighting ceremony at 6 o'clock, is that right?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else, or should we move to adjourn? The world record, 9 o'clock.
Move to adjourn.
It's 9:00. Uh, we have a motion to adjourn, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Yep, all in favor, aye, and we've got a, all right, we adjourned.